I said, when I am speaking, you should be quiet and it became, it got off.
मोदिंजे पर अभी कोरस पाना गया वंद्रच्छा दे
After finishing, they sang the chorus and it came back again.
आमन पोट वने नम्मे विश्वासीला अविल्लाक अपुति लाल कवले ले विटा पोने एला ओडिता
After they, they put on amen, our believers just went off.
पिसास पुट्चा लाल कोणदूर कांगले निन्न पोराड़ी एला राबिशेय लकट्टनुम् उहूहू एंगे इंगे वंद्रुमो जोटे एला रोडिबिटा
When they brought a girl tied up with Satan, they were fearing whether that spirit will come to them and all fled.
नान टेबल एडत्ते अले यो कांदरने
And I, I, I after my prayer was sitting there only.
एला रिजोमनुवन सोने
I said, let's all pray.
ओर आलट्ट वेर रुन्दे लांग एला रिजबित्तो
One, seven and eight of us were praying together.
कोण नरंग गलित नान चने मुलंगल पोड़े
After some time, I asked her to kneel down.
एन नान केरला रुन्द वंदे एन्ने पुई मुलंगल पोड़ सुलिटे अवड़ीनीस
They, it said, I have come from Kerala, are you asking me to kneel down?
एन नान केरला मंद्रवार तन्ना अदु बिरय पॉवरफुल्ला
Because the magic of Kerala is powerful since.
नान चने नी मोदला मुलंगल पोड़े
I said firstly, you kneel down.
वोडने एन्ने वनिच्छे रेण्डु कालीम बोट मारी नीटिच्छे
Immediately, just stretched out both legs.
नान मुलंगल पोड़मते
I will not kneel down.
नान चने
And I said
फिलिपियरला ओर वार्ता रुके
In Philippines, it's a word.
वान और बोदलतोर, भूमियन कीलान और, यावरुड़ी मुलंगलुम मुडंगुम्बड़ीके, एसुवे कत्तरेंद नावगल याव अरिक्य पन्नुम्बड़ीके, अवर एला नामुथ्कु मेलान नाम वच्चे रुकरारे, इंदा वासना उन्मन्ना मुलंगल पोड़े
He has kept a high name above every name, that everything which is in heaven and that things on earth and things underneath should burn kneel down. If this verse is true, you kneel down.
आहा, अदल्लान अम्बोड़मिट्यादनुच्छे
It said, I cannot kneel down.
तरी पाकलान इंदा वासना वेलसे ईदा इल्लियान पापुंटे, ओर अंज निम्स नानु एला रिजबिच्छिटे
And for five minutes, we were all praying together, seeing if this working, verse is working or not.
अदु काले नल्ला स्टांग नीटिच्छे आविल्या
That spirit was stretching out, it's like firmly like that.
ओर अंज निम्मड़ा मानदे
For five minutes, it was.
मेला बात बेस
It looked up and spoke.
मुडियादे
Cannot.
मुडियादे
I cannot do it.
नान चने नान इंगे उकांदरके यान्ता पेसे, एंगे यो पेसरे एन्चने
I said, I am sitting here, you speak to me, not somewhere else.
अदु सोने वोनक्के एनक्कु पेच्छिकड़यादे, एनक्कु एनक्कु परलवुतुकु ताइ पेच्छिन्न सोने
There's no talk between me and you, but between me and heaven.
अबना एनक्कु पुरिंजिदे, युत्ता त्यार टेकअप निरकरा, परलवुन टेकअप निरके
Only then I understood that the heaven has taken the battle.
एनक्के अदुरिके दिरयादले, नान उकांदर्ते यान्ता पेसे, यान्ता पेसे ना अदु एंगे यान्ता पेसे अदु अंगे सोलिदे, अंगरुन्द मेला रुन्द परत्ल रुन्द ओर कटलाई, एन्न वर्धे, पोडु मुलंगल इदिना मुडियादे, मुडियादे, नान कैट वने वोनक्के एनक्कु सम्मंदमेकड़यादे, नान मेला पेसरे
When I asked, it said that I have no communication with you, but it was speaking to heaven and heaven was having control to kneel down.
नान चने, राइट, अवर टेकअप न्टर नान चुम्मा उकांदर्के
Then I said, he is taken off and I was quite.
अंगरुन्द एन्ना अड्डी उडंदिच्छे न्तरियादे
Suddenly, there was some beating upon it.
एन्ना उडंदिच्छे न्तरले, स्प्रिंग मारी मुलंगल पोटे, एसुवे नामुथ्ला नाम पोरा, नी जय चिरण्नु पोत्तन उडंदिच्छे
But I said, spring, it just knelt down and said that in the name of Jesus.
वान और बोदलतोर, भूमियन कीलान और, यावरुड़ी मुलंगलुम मुडंगनो
The knees of all those one are heaven and earth and in the underneath, the earth should all bow down.
देव तूदर्गल, देव तूदर्गल, मनिदर्गल, कीलर रुकर बादालती नावी, एल्लामे एसु कुमुनाल मुलंगल पोड़नो
All angels and men and all the spirits underneath in the hell also should bow down.
वोनक्के अंदा वल्लमे रुके
You have the power.
अभिषेकम्बत्ते एला रुले अंदा वल्लमे रुके
All those who are anointed have this power.
इन्नत आलमा चोलरा, न्यानसानम्बत्ते एला रुकन्दा पावर रुके
And more deeply, I say those who have taken battle to them all have the power.
विश्वासिकर ओवरुन्द कंदा किर्वा रुकर
All those who believe, you have this grace.
मार्क 16:17 विश्वासिकर नदकुम अडयालंगल यावन
All the miracles and signs which are taken into the belief.
एनुड़ी नामुथ्नाले अवर्गल पिसासगलाई तुरतुवार
In my name, they will cast out their demons.
अदु का अभिषेकम्बरनो, अदु को रिजिपा पोड़नो लाल अवसीयले, वोनक्ला विश्वास रुन्दा, एस पिसासी पोन्जना पोहो
For that, you need not be anointed and you may not have a jipa, in the name of Jesus, go out, it will go out.
वोनकुरमा मंद्रवारियो, एन्दा वल्लमियो निरक्का मुडियादे
No magician or magic can stand for you.
देवुंडे वल्लमे वोनक्ल रुन्दाल, एन्दा सक्तियो उन्मेल कई पोड़ा मुडियादे
If you have the power of God upon you, no power can put a stone upon you.
ओरितुले सोलिदा, पिसासनमा तुरतुरो, नम्मे एप्माल वीक आइटा, अदु वंदे नम्मल आच्छुपडो
Some say we are casting out demons, when we become weak, it will come and attack us.
आयान वीक आगपोरा
Why are you becoming weak?
नी वो वाल्के मैनेज पन्ने, बैलेंस पन्ने
You balance your life and go?
वेदम एन्ने सोलिदे
What is the word of God saying?
लुक्काल दिन विश्वशेष्यम पत्तामतिकारम पत्तम्बदावसना एन्ने सोलिदे
Luke's Gospel 10:19
सर्पंगलाईयुम तेलगलाई मिदिक्कुम, सत्रुवुंडिय सगल वल्लमियु मेर्कोल्लुम, उंगलुका अधिकारण गोडुकरे ओण्रुम उंगलाई सेदप्पड्डा माट्ठादे
Behold, I give you power to tread on serpents and scorpions and over all the power of the enemy, and nothing shall by any means hurt you.
पिसास तुरसन वल्लाम, पिसास आडिच्छिच्छिन्न चना, तिरीपे अबड़ी उलियन जयमुडियादे
If those who are casting out devil demons, if it is attacking them, how can you do the ministry?
नम्मलंगलुका पादिवरुक दैरिया रुके, पादिवरुक भयमरु
Half of us have the courage and half of us are feared.
पिसासन वने कोण एतु निकरा, ओर मारी वंदे वने ओडिपेरा
They are resisting the Satan, but when it comes somewhat, they are fleeing away.
अनेहरुके तंगलुड़े अजीवियत्तले, कत्तर तनोड़ कुड़ा रुकरारंगर निचियम, अवुल्लकु विश्वासिकर मुडिकरदे लाई
Many of them are not able to believe that the Lord is with them.
दतुतुले विओसी कॉलेज बसंगल्ला, एतागला सुडुगाट रुन्दिच्छे, ओर नाल पोटी पोटान
In Tutankhamun, Viosi College students had a competition in something.
हास्टल्ले रुकर बसंगल्ला, यार रापुई, अंदा कलरलाई लाई आनी अडिच्छे वरदे, आनी अडिच्छे वंदा परंग गोडुकरन्न सोना
All the hostel students had a competition as to who will go and nail the sepulchre, they will give money.
ओरितुले लाल पिसास आडिच्छिच्छे, अबड़िया अंज कोड रुन्दिच्छे न्तोलो
Some of them say that the Satan has beaten and there are five marks like this.
अबड़ि सोलिदा केल्विपर रुकिंगला
Have you heard like this?
पिसास वंदा अडिच्छिन्ना, पिन्नल अंज कोड उडंदरन्न सोलो
If there is an attack of the Satan, there will be five marks behind.
इंदा पाय्यम पोना
This boy went.
अवम बोल्ड आपुईटा
He went boldly.
ओर सुत्ती ओर आनी, आनी एला एडत्ते, नेरा सुडुगाट बुल्ला पूंद कलरके भईटा
He took a hammer and a nail and went straight into the sepulchre.
एवं नन्न्बरलाल वेलिया वेटिंग
And all the friends were standing out.
इवनुकु भयंगरा भयं, ओर रलवु बोल्ड
This boy had a great fear, but some what boldness was there.
पोई इरिट्ला तट्टु तदमारी, वंदे पंदे पोरुलाकीय, अंदा कुरिक्पट्टा कलरे पोई टच्पन्टा
In the darkness, he went because of the competition towards the certain burial place where they were asked to go.
भयंगरा इरिट्य
It was dark.
परे साउंड विद्यासमान सर्ता
And the noise was different.
चुनिंजु उल्ला भईटा
Bravely, he went.
उल्ला भई, अंदा सुडुगाट करेक्ट अंदा कलरे तेडी कंजुश्चा
He somehow spotted the place of the sepulchre.
तिरुम्बी गिरुम्बी बात्ता
And he turned back and saw.
पिसास तेरिदा
Is there any devil?
पिसास वरदा
Is there any devil coming?
इप्पा अंग वंदे ओर आनी अडिच्छे वर्नो
Now he has to nail there and come back.
अच्छा
He nailed it.
वाहमा रिक्के वच्छा अट्या 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 ना अच्छा
He nailed that place.
अच्छु गिरुमुना
And he turned back.
ओर इलु पुलुतिच्छे
And there was something which hurt him.
आवला दा
That's all.
अंगे उडंदु सेतु भिटा
There, he died.
इवनुका कातु 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 कडंदु, कोलम्बी पोई कडाइसिले, एला रुन्द चोली लाइट गिट्ला एडत्ते, ओर बिरय टीमे उल्ला वंदा
All these boys were waiting and finally with all the lights and they were confused and came in, there was a great team.
ओर ला वंदा अवन सेतु भिट्ट करना
Finding him dead when they came in.
एन्ना नरंदिच्छे दिरिमा
What happened was?
इवन चट्टायुन जयत्वच्छे आनी अडिच्छा अला, इवन चट्टायुन जयत्वच्छे, भयत्ला एन्नत अडिकरुन दिरयाम, चट्टायुन जयत्वच्छे अडिच्छा मारंग तिरुमुन वने चट्टायुन ओर इलु पुलुतिच्छे, आहा पिसास इलुतिच्छे न्ने, अबड़िया अंदा प्रेशर कूड़ी, अंज नरमु वेडिच्छिच्छे, अद्दाम पिसास आडिच्छे अडु पिसास अडिकले, अंदा नरमु वेडिच्छे दा अंज उपिसास पत्या अडिच्छिच्छे न्तोल्छा
In his fear, he was nailing, he nailed his shirt along with that nail and when he turned back there, he saw his shirt pulling him. Finally, he thought that he was caught by the terror and he was dead.
नम्मलु गुड़ पलय विश्वासिकराम, बाइबिल दुकी नेंजल वच्छितान तूंगरा
Even all believers are keeping the word of God on their chest and they are sleeping.
एन्ना कोण जो भयं वंद्रच्छे ना, तलयनय तलयनय वांडा, बाइबिल बरसा वच्छिकरा
If more of fear comes, they do not want the pillow but the Bible.
ओरने इवनु पोई, नेट्टले ओर सिलवाई, नेंजल ओर सिलवाई पोटे, बाइबिल कैला गुड्डु, नी वैथुकल अवड़ी
Immediately, they put the cross upon their forehead.
नी इदा बाइबिल फॉलो पन्निटे ना, बाइबिल तेवैले, वोन किट्टा पिसासी वरदा
If you are following the Bible, you need not have the Bible at all, it will not come in.
एन्दा सेवन यार नालु मन्नेटो, कत्तर मोनक्कु तान जयत कोडुपर
Whatever which anybody is doing, the Lord will definitely grant you victory.
कत्तरुड़ी अपरिसु तनामथ्कु मयमुंड आवदा
Praise be to the holy name of the Lord.
मंद्रवारम एप्पुल्डु पलिकादे, नम्मडे सब्जेक्ट ओरु
When shall the magic, magic not come upon you?
पिसास करे चुना रम्मे इंटरेस्ट खेकिरिंग
You are interesting when we are saying about the stories of devil.
चोल्ला वनिंद अवसीय
There's needful to say.
अना इप्पा जय करदे अप्पड़ी
But how do we overcome?
सेवनय जयपदु अप्पड़ी
How can we overcome enchanting?
मंद्रवात्ते जयपदु अप्पड़ी
How do we overcome divination?
कुरी सोलिदले जयपदु अप्पड़ी
How do we overcome divination?
चला आविवलाला अबड़िये उन्मय पेसो
Some spirits will speak truth like that.
अबड़िया नरंददा अबड़िया रिपीट पनो
It will repeat what has happened.
पासारुदा सैलतले रुकुंबोदे
When Pastor Arudha was in Salem.
नकुडुकु बाकरावन्दा
This man who was enchanting came.
इवर एन्ने सोलियो उंटार, इवर ताम पिसास स्पेशलिस्ट थाच्छे
He's only specialist of Satan.
पिसासनाले इवरुके, आवी तेरिंजुपेरो
And if it is Satan, his spirit will know.
इवन कुडुकु बुल्लन अडिच्छुने, फैतम कुटावन्तान, एल्मी उंटार
When he was rolling over the thing, he came outside.
उल्लर रुन्दे एन्ना सोलिरन केकरा
He asked us to what he's telling from inside.
अव अडिकरा
He's enchanting.
अडिच्छे सोलरा, इंगे रुकर, आया ओके चेन्नाईके मार्त्तोंगरा
He's telling that this brother here is transferred to Chennai.
नल्ला गालम परक्कुम्मा, एन्नलामो चोलो, इंदा इंगे करंग रुका अच्छा बुजम्मा, इवे इंगे फैतम वंदे वने पास्टर मार्ला पेसरा
And he was smiling.
इंगे रुकर, आया ओके चेन्नाईके मार्त्तोंगरा, इदिना पुरुसा सोलिरने, अवड़ीना, कालीला पोस्टकार्ड वरदे, ट्रांसफर टू चेन्नाई
And he was thinking as to what this person is coming and telling like this, even as a worker, next day the postcard came saying that he's transferred to Chennai.
नान इदा केल्विपर वने, नानु एनक्कु ओर अविश्वासम, ओर विदुत्ले विश्वासम, इदि अबड़ि इवल्ला करेक्टाई सोलो
When I heard this, I had partly faith and partly disbelief.
तरी इदा चेक पन्नुन्ने, एनक्कु ओर आसर रुन्दिच्छे
I too wanted to check it out.
नान चितुरले, आंद्रल उलियन जयम्बोदे
I was serving Gordon Shitoo.
अंग ओर पेन्नुकु पिसास पड्डी, भयंगरम आडिट्टनुच्छे
One girl was possessed by devil and she was dancing there.
अदु उडंड उडंड उडंड, हाल्ला ओर साइडला भई, सोरा बातु, एसेकिया मारी पड्डिच्छे
She was just rolling down and went and slept like Ezekiel in the space of the house.
एसेकिया, तिरकस तिरकस न्ने, मोहत्ता तिरिपि, सोर पक्कमा तिरिपिकिटमा, इंदा आवी पोई, अबड़ि सांझिच्छे
As Ezekiel turned his face towards the wall when it was prophesied, this spirit also turned its face towards the wall.
अबन तिरपतिले रुन्द ओर विश्वासी पाय्ये एने पाका वंदा
When boyfriend Tirupadi came to see me.
अव विश्वासीला
He was a believer.
अव वंदा
He came in.
नान ओरने सोने
I immediately said.
चुम्मा जोक मार्ल दम पेसने
I spoke as a joke.
अंदा आवी वंदा आदिपरासक्ति, आवी तान आडिकिटरुके
That spirit was
आदिपरासक्ति, पर्यदा, पर्यदा, नेम दा अबड़ि सोलो
That was Adiparasakti.
अंदा देवुड़ी पर्य
That is the name of the devil.
नान ओरने सोने
Immediately, I said.
ए, नी इंगे वंदे इबड़ि उडंड गडकरे, वोम बक्तन वंदरकरा, वोम बक्तनुकु मुनाले इबड़ि नी उडंद उडललामा, केवल पडलामा न्ने
You are rolling like this and your devote has come here, can you roll down before your devotee like this?
नी एनो बिरय सक्तिंगरे, इंगे दे इंगे फैतमले, तरेल उडंड गडकरे, इंदा वोम बक्तन वंदा, अवे अबड़ि वोने कुम्बुडुआ अबड़िन सोने
I said, you are a great spirit you say, and you are rolling like this, and when your devotee is come, how will he worship you?
एम बक्तन नान चुट्ट सदारने निचुकांदिच्छे
Immediately, he got up and rose up and sat, visiting my devotee.
अदुके तनुड़ी प्रिस्टेज विट्टु कुड़के, मरिप विट्टु कुड़के मुडियादे
It could not leave its prestige.
सदारने निचुकांदिच्छे
It just rose up and sat.
अबड़ि तिरुम्बी बातुच्छे, एन्गुड़ा नानु योनुन्दा निकरो
He just turned back and saw and he was standing.
अवन अवड़ी, ओर ट्रिप, मेला रुन्द केलर कार्य, ओर ओर पारु पातुच्छे
It looked at that boy from top to bottom.
इवन आ
Is it he?
ओर सेकंडले
And
अवड़ी ओर ट्रिप अडिपा तुन इवन अपुई एम बक्तन सोलिटीया, अवड़ीनीस
You looked at him and said that he is my devotee?
तिरुम्बी यार अवड़ीने
Then I asked, who is he?
इवन CPMले पोनु गडकिलन्ने, वेर आइकेटले कट्टी सभय विट्टु पोनावन, इवन अपुई यांकट्टन निर्त्रा, अवड़ीनीच्छे, अवनुकु वेहर्तिच्छे अवड़ी
It said that he did not get a bride of CPM and went to another church and got married, you're telling that he is my devotee, he is just fettered.
कल्याणत्तुकु वेर आइकेटुकु पोनावन्ना कोण्डु वंदे एम बक्तन गरे, इवलंगादा वन सोलिच्छे, अवन, अवन पावरशू अदुदुलाम पोट्टुन्ना, अबड़िये वेहर्तु कुट्टु 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 ना आडिटा नान चने एन्डा भयपुरा, इदि नायरुकरा, कुड़ा रुकर
He was shivering because the spirit said that he's gone to another church for her bride.
अडुत्त सेकंडे
And the next second.
अवन हिस्ट्रीय ओर राड़ी अडिच्छे, अवन अदोड़ा सोरन्दे भिटा, एनक्के दिरयादे, इवन कल्याणत्तुकु वेर सभी पोना
He told its whole history, I did not know that he had gone to another church for his wedding.
अडुत्त अडुत्त नाल
And the next day.
एनक्के इंटरप्रेशन वर्तर पन्नुवर
One person was interpreting for me.
नल्ला सगोद, नल्ला वेट्टार्परे, अवर तेलिंगल, नान तमिलला पेसो, अवर तेलिंगला पेसो
I used to speak in Tamil and he does interpret in Tamil.
अवर वंदा
And he came.
अवर वंदे, नान ए, एल्मी उकारे, अवड़ीनी पेसिट्रुकुंबोदि इवर निन्ना
When I asked it to rise upon it, he also commenced to come to them.
नान अंग मुनुमासुन्दा रुन्दा
I was only there for three months.
अनले इवनु भयत्तालाल एनक्के दिरयादे
But I do not know their bydata.
ओर विश्वासी एम यारु, अबड़ि अवर बैकग्राउंड एनक्के दिरयादे
I did not know how the believers are and what their background is.
अदु एल्मी उकारमते निच्छे
That Satan did not get up and sat.
नान एल्म्बन सोने, अदु एल्म्बमते निच्छे, ओरने इदा विश्वासी यांकुड़ा निन्नुकट्टना ना इंटरप्रेशन, ए ले, अदु एल्म्ब, अवड़ीन सोना, अदु तेलिंगला पेसन
It refused to sit up, but this person was interpreting after rising up.
अबड़ि ओर पारुवाय
And just
नान ननसाय मन्ने कीम माटिरुम्बोल केरिदे
I thought today he is caught.
ऊलियतुकु पाइटे, सापाड़ कस्ततले, ओड़ि वंदे, कल्याणकटिटे इंदा सभयल विश्वासी आरुकर, एन्ने तुरतुकु वोनक्कु अधिकारण गड़यादे, पायम मोडुनीस
It said, you have gone to the ministry without food, you came out of the ministry now you are a believer.
ऊलियतुकु पोई, सापाड़ कस्ततले, नी ओड़ि वंदे, कल्याणकटिटे इंदा सभयल विश्वासी आरुकर, एन्ने तुरतुकु वोनक्कु पावर गड़यादे निच्छे अदोड़ा इवर ऑफ आइटर, अबड़ि पर तेलिंगला वरला, तमिल वरला
He was put off, he could not speak after that.
अबड़ि रुकुन योस्ती पटिंगला
Think and see how it was.
यपमो ऊलियतला वंद्रुकरार पावो, अप्पा भयंगर ऊलियतला कस्टो, मुन्नाल, नाल्लाल सापाड़लन्ने, ने कोटस ओर वायर गुच्चु भिटा
Sometime
कल्याणकटिटे विश्वासी आई, इंदिकी अवर सभयल इंटरप्रेटर, एनक्के इदा मैटर दिरयादे, अडु तिरुमुन वने, ओर राड़ी अडिच्छे, अवन ऑफ ओरुत्त ओवरुत्त एला री नाकोट्टा, टप्पु टप्पुन तडिटे बोधदे
Sometime back, he came to the ministry and went out in hunger, got married and is now the interpreter of the church, but now he's telling what it was.
अबड़ि आविबिटिच्छे ओर आल्डरन्ना, इप्पा पादिवर निच्छे ओड़ितुवा, रोडुलिया
If there's a demon possessed person like this, half of them will flee from here.
लाइव हिस्ट्री सोलिदे रुन
It will keep telling the life history.
वोनकुल रुकर वल्लमे परिदाखर कवेंट
But the power in you should be great.
उल्लकत्तल रुकर वनील, वोनकुल रुकर वर, परियवरा रुकवेंट
He that is in you should be greater than he that is in the world.
एन्दा वल्लमियु मेर्कोल्लु मुडियाद अलवु, वोनकुल देवुंडे सक्ति रुकवेंट
You should have the power of God by which no power can overcome.
What the Baath had the believer with the angels? What concord had Christ with Belaiah? And what agreement has the temple of God with idol? You separate yourselves from the wicked and you come to the rock. Firstly, you need a life of separation in the world. If your fellowship is with the carnal people, it is easy for devil to put his hands upon you. You have an individuality. Being alone, you should reveal the power of God. When you mix yourself with the unbelievers, then your power is decreased and your wall of fence is also decreased. And Abraham departed from Lot? Although there were many reasons cited, Abraham did not want to be with the one who had no vision. Those who are having the vision of Canaan cannot be related with the ones who are having the vision of the world. Having the fellowship with unbelievers, you should not live with divinity. If you are having communion with unbelievers, then can you be getting changed as believers after some time? There are two kinds of doves. And it will go to another nest and stay there. But there are powerful doves. Those doves will draw these innocent dove into their nest. Are you able to bring your husband or wife or partner or neighbor to this divinity? If not, being in fellowship with them is very difficult. That is the back slayer which is in the church which you should separate from them. That is said by Saint Paul very clearly. I have asked you to separate yourself. What is the right meaning of this? I wrote you in the apostle not to keep company with fornicator. Therefore, all those who are in the world are somehow may become accused in this world. And I do not write to saying that you should not be mixed with them. If so, you should depart from this world. I say of the one who is in this company, not to keep company, that is one of the brother who is like this a fornicator, you should not have a company, should not eat with them also. Two kinds of separation. You should one be separated from the people of this world, from his evil habits and secondly, from the back slayers of the church. He shedding the blood of bullocks and coming and standing for prophecy. See how it is? He sacrificed seven bullocks. But when he came here. From the top of the rocks, I see them from the hills, they hold them because they are a people who dwell alone. Then he said that I asked to curse them but you are blessing him and you cannot do anything. He is telling us too, how can I curse the people whom the Lord does not curse, whom can I kill the people whom the Lord not kills? Can you understand the power of the separation? There is a great power in the separated life and this witchcraft will not touch you. Our fellowship is with the father and the son, you also be united with us. If you have the right unity with the fellowship of the saints and the God, then you will know divinity, know enchantment and know witchcraft will work and the Lord will tell you before itself. No weapon which can form against you wherever it is formed, then he will save, son, you be aware and it's written against you. In the Lord has given you this revelation, immediately kneel down and pray whatever night it is and this power of witchcraft will not love. All these you have to practice it. Inneke katrudi aavi aanavanta pesuvare, yatalan katpanne, yara vittu velakke, ellam unna kusollvar, nee karakta thundikannu. You have heard the right word of God today until your death, you should live the life of separation and today the spirit of God will say that you have to cut off all these things and you should cut off. Some of them difficult to leave friendship. Some of them are not able to leave wrong contact. How can I forget, how can I be not without thinking, how can I leave it? As soon as the child is being born, immediately it is cut off from the mother's womb. After coming into Christ where you have to cut off, you have to cut. Unnecessary contacts and unnecessary friendships you should cut off and they said not touch you. No, I will leave a little by little. You will never leave little by little, you will altogether touch, catch. Those who are drinking are like, says I will drink a little today but leave little by little, it will not go to heaven. And today the Lord is speaking to you. Why are you in confusion? Whatever friendship or whatever laws it is, do not be worried, you cut it off. Who is the one able to encounter the dust of people? They are the people who are dwelling around them. I speak, I see to them from the rocks. Who can come near them? Firstly, is your life of separation. Secondly. The second thing, what, after the second sacrifice is standing. Again, he is shedding the blood of seven bullocks and seven goats and standing. And he gives the blood of hen, the blood of goat and comes and stands but the blood of beast is able to shatter all these souls. Now he is telling, whether even if you ask me to bless, I cannot bless and if he curses, he let him curse. When he stood there, he said, I have received a command to bless and if the Lord bless, nobody can turn it. The Lord will not do anything but preserve them. The Lord does not see the iniquity in Jacob, no povertness in Israel. He told the second reason for him not to. He told the second reason for him not to. Second reason for them not to be overcome is shouts of the king is among them. He who is praising and praying is the power of witchcraft cannot touch them. Is the shout of the king is there in your spot? In the house you are residing is the shout of the king's part. Some hundred and seventeen verses. We can see that in the house of the righteous, we can see the shouting. If you are the righteous person, then in your house will be the voice of praising. We should always have praise and prayer in your mouth. In your tabernacle should be the voice of the king. And the voice of salvation should be there in your house. What is the tendency of your prayers? I went to a house. And they are fishermen. They had a lot of debt. They are doing the work in the seas. Seven laps, eight laps was the debt. Early in the morning, they both left. Whether they catch the fish or not, for one day's expenses, seven, eight or eight thousand. Even if they not get the fishes, they have to pay the wages and the boat needs and the diesel charges everything. When I had gone to that house, I asked this, how long do you pray? I prayed for ten minutes. For ten years, this debt will be there. You're praying only for ten minutes? With this ten minutes of pray, you cannot do anything. He is, everyone is standing for twenty-four hours in the prayer. Your husband is gone for his business in the sea, only if the Lord gives it is there, you should cry out in your house. If you stand in the presence of God and pray, the Lord will bless your husband's work, if you pray for ten minutes, the debts will not be close. How is your prayer? You should have a prayer which is able to overcome witchcraft. When Satan is rising up, until you have the vision that he is falling down, you should never leave. Look Gospel when we read. They said because of their revival that they say devil is a subject into us. I beheld Satan as lightning falls from heaven. Until you have the vision that Satan is falling down from heaven, you should not raise up from your knees. If there be a witchcraft done today, that should be approved today. Keeping for the next ten years, you should not go about from this pastor to that pastor, from churches, from prophecies to prophecies and go from street to street writing postcards. And you put down your knees. You bend your knees. And the Lord will hear your voice. Call unto me in the day of trouble and I shall deliver you and you shall glory to me. For this, there is no need of the pastor, sister, you kneel down and the Lord will break this powers against you. The shout of the king is it within you? Do you have the praises in the morning? Do you have the midnight prayer in your house? Do you have the fasting prayer in your house? Do you have the praising and prayer in your house? As a family, are you praying towards the Lord? Is the family prayer? Are you going for area prayer? Are you getting filled? Are you honoring to the truth? Are you loving the Lord? When you stand in right anointing, this devil in your house will flee. One young boy came to a church where I was. And came, went back home. As soon as he stepped in, his sister just fell down. His mother could not just catch anything. Immediately, he came in, she fell down. That's pretty shouting. It was his sister, after he anointed, that spirit fell down. Is there anybody falling down when you go in your house? If there is a power within you, it will be revealed. First, Arudhas was powerful man. If he gets on to the back door and those who are in the front door, four, seven, eight will flee. See, two words text in the power of God is filled in them. Our people say that the Sataness pressed me down. When you have the breath saying that it is the blood of Jesus, you cry out to him asking for his blood only when you are in danger. Will it press you? Can you leave it as long as it's pressing you? I was transferred to Tanjo. On the first day. All the believers turned back leaving me. I sat down in the hall. I was very tired. I had tight schedule for five days. And all the people from me departed. And the believer who was working as a musician, he was lying down the hall and I was lying down. Because it was the first day, I prayed for some time and slept. I was spreading the mat and lying down. In one second, I slept off. Because I was very tired, they just drew me. Immediately, a spirit came. In my spirit, I felt that. One man is coming and standing. I can feel in my spirit. The spirit is standing straight towards me. It's coming to press hard on me. Immediately, when it was burning down, the Lord said, the spirit of God said, you raise up, you dare it. Immediately, the next second, I got filled in spirit. And after that, I was able to peacefully. If it was pressed me there, then I had to go away from. We should not allow Satan to press over us, the spirit of God within us should say right and try. If you do not have right prayer life, you cannot stand. If you do not pray for yourself, then as your belly and mouth is different, for you are responsible for your sword. First Solomon took this first in charge in Tirupidi. It was an old pharaoh. First naali, poiyin tangi, kaale naalu madhijavam murchi, veli oru katthil bhotu paduthirukkai. First day after the prayer, he went and for five o'clock, he was after praising, lying down outside in the car. A light came towards him. He is lying down and watching that light. And he was thinking whether the flight's light will burn like this. It came close by. After certain limit, he was thinking as too, whether the Lord is going to come or establish and to meet him. And the light just came, became very bright and finally came to the pharaoh. And he is looking over this open eyes at the light. When it came close by, he could smell the fragrance of flowers and all other. And he could understand it's devil. I asked to whether, why he came here, get out in the name of the. A voice from that light is saying. Yadu arumiyana visiting, kaale first aal, wiswasi gudinna varla, yara vendita?
Prayer is failing.
Prayer is not supported.
He has no prayer support or failing.
You know what it means to get married? You don't give him a salary. You just sit there and watch each other's lives.
The reason for you getting married is that you must support each other in prayer.
If you're alone, you should...
He is living alone, is about him.
If you're alone, you should watch.
If there is some company, he will lift up.
What is the right partner for? For what?
For?
We have to learn from Bible. When he is tired, he should watch.
Our opinion is different, but the Bible says that when he is stumbling, that he might be lifted up.
Three.
Thirdly.
First, if you are not a good person, you can't support him. Second, if you are a bad person, you can't support him.
Firstly, when you have the life of separation, it will not touch you. When you have prayer, secondly, it will not touch you.
Three.
Thirdly, numbers twenty-three, twenty-seven.
He tells another reason there.
The God who is in Egypt has been cursed.
God has cursed the devil.
They have the strength of the unicorn.
This is what I see.
What does this show?
This shows the power of the Holy Spirit. If this witchcraft should not attack you, you should have right anointing. When there is a right anointing, Satan will not come near you. Or else you will be beaten. A right anointing. In numbers twenty-four, eight, we can see this word.
He is having the strength of the unicorn.
When the children of Egypt were born, they said, "When they are born itself, you should make them to die." But the Egyptians came and said that the Hebrews women are strong.
If it is one night, we see that the women of the Hebrews are strong.
Tell of God should be a strong person.
Although your body is weak, in your spirit, you should be strong. If he was strong, then the enemy will not come in and he will not die.
144 verse 14. Our children are not blessed, and they will not suffer.
Our oxen may be strong to live well, then there is no breaking in or going out of the devil.
Luke 11:8, we see that as long as the child was back strong, he was found in the wilderness.
That which is not possible by your strength nor might is possible by the spirit of God. Therefore, we ask you to come for the charity.
Get filled with the spirit and the truth. All your mind, thoughts, and imaginations, and body, soul, and spirit should all be filled with the spirit of God. Be with people who have a good revelation.
You should be a people who can discern the spirit.
You should be a people who can speak good language.
You should be people who are able to speak with God.
All this is speaking with God, are speaking the mysteries that he might be defied.
The strength of the unicorn is found in it.
It is having only one horn, and nobody can go in it.
God, there's our strength, and nobody can stand against it. When you are in right anointing, Satan cannot come near you. You should get filled in the spirit.
You know about Pastor Lazarus? What a weak person he was.
He was a very weak person.
But one place, he cast a devil.
With a worried voice shot. And the spirit went out.
And the others people said, "How bravely he is..."
You should rest at the devil.
You should stand in your anointing and rebuke it.
You should bind the devil.
You should stamp over the head of devil.
For that, the anointing given to you.
You should not just clap your hands or shake your hands, saying, "Worship and..."
The anointing within you should be able to crush the head of Satan.
You should be able to crush the head of Satan.
Whatever, whoever might do with God.
If you stand rightly in prayer, first day, it will be rebuked.
Next, when you kneel down, it will reverse.
You need not fear it.
You need not worry as to who has done it.
So many devils are against the people of God, but if you pray well and rub in right anointing, now park and... Numbers 24:7.
Again, he is saying, asking whether he could curse them after sacrifice. Now, he did not want to sacrifice.
23:30, he is sacrificing.
Now, what does he say?
24:7.
He shall pour the water out of his bucket. What does this show? This shows the life of faith. Out of the one who believes, from him flows the rivers of water. Firstly, a believer should believe rightly in the Lord.
You should not fear whether Satan will come or it will happen like this or that.
When you read his trip, Joe.
He said, "I am afraid of it, and I have been afraid of it."
In one place, he is stating that what he has feared happened to him.
Then he was not afraid of it.
So, he had no faith in him.
He was surprised.
He feared God.
But in one place, he is stating that what had feared had come from him.
He was always thinking like this and fearing. My children are doing like this, will they die?
In verse 25, where the thing which I greatly feared is come upon me.
How does that happen? An upright thing like this.
He said, "I am afraid of it, and I have been afraid of it."
That which was afraid of is coming to me. He thought whether all the ten children will be dying one day.
Will all my calves be caught one day?
Will all my bulls be caught one day?
Will all my sheep be caught one day?
Suddenly, if it will wind and the house will fall. Should there be a thing like this?
He said, "What was afraid of came upon me?"
He do not have the faith that the rod not meets such thing.
Do you have faith?
Without faith, it is impossible to please God.
You believe?
How can you believe God?
That he is?
You should believe that it is the reward of him who search for him. In Hebrews 11, we can see this. Without faith, it is impossible to please him.
Hebrews 11:6.
He that comes to God must believe that he is and is the reward of them that diligently seek him. Is there rivers of water flowing from out of your heart?
John 7:38, we can see that out of him that believers, from him shall flow rivers of water.
He that believers, Satan cannot touch.
He that believers, it cannot be done anything by Satan. If you kill the child, you will find him.
Abraham believed in God, and he had a command to kill the child, but he had in his heart of faith.
How much of faith do you have?
He is me. No power can touch me. I am in the flame of fire. No power can work against God. You should preserve this faith.
First, life of separation.
Secondly, life of prayer. Thirdly, anointing of the Holy Spirit. Fourthly, the faith upon God. You should believe on God just like that. What he has commanded, he will do it. Have you gone to a place of witchcraft?
Last week, one person called up and said that I made a mistake going to an enchantment.
And only he is telling that he is a believer. When she was studying, she was a believer.
But now, she has gone to a witchcraft.
But in the midst of a lot of struggles, went to seeking for another witchcraft. But it could not work. How will it work?
After taking the Bible, have you gone towards enchanting?
Although you have not done against anybody, have you gone for business?
Whether you've gone for the others or for your sake, you've glowed. Saul did like this. Saul was a very powerful man, he was a very zealous person, and he chased the ones who were looking after witchcraft and sorcery.
But now, when he was back, he didn't grow up, did not speak. Finally, he went towards the woman who was a sasura. Finally, the result was? Tomorrow, you shall be in hell with me. Are you seeking for witchcraft? Some of them will want to see their hands in pharmacy, when others are looking into their hands. Have you looked into your pharmacy? Have you gone to after sorcery? Have you gone and seen like this? That's a bit adjustable.
In Kings 9:22, Jehu says, "How can the Lord be in peace with you when the mother's warden and the mother of witchcraft are so many?"
The Lord has sealed every hand's hand. It's true. There is the prince in everyone's hand. The Lord has sealed it. That is the thing which the Lord has kept. The Lord has sealed everyone's hands. We need not go and search over those things.
And some of them will have the parrots, and they will enchant on the roadside.
But his fate is to sit on the road.
But he will enchant everything for the others who are around the place, but he will be sitting under the tree only next day.
Have any of you done like this? Are you keeping witchcraft? Are you going after enchanting? Have you gone for yourself or for the others?
If he had gone before, you have been saved, the Lord is making out the things when you are not saved.
But if taking the Bible, you are going, then you kneel down and ask pardon, or it will be cursed. Because this time is the very worst time. They are doing witchcraft for their own husband. To their own wife, they are doing witchcraft. To their own children, they are committing witchcraft. To their own brethren, they are doing witchcraft. It's such a worst time. You should not give room for such spirits. If you are giving room for such spirits, you are going ready to go to hell. In the last times, they will go seeking like this. I have not done witchcraft at all. Are you doing a double game to anyone? Are you doing anything which is against their purpose?
In Psalm 15:22, we can see that he who is doing the double potion is against the witchcraft.
What is the right meaning? You should not cheat a person or rebel against the one who are... Do not rebel against your parents. Do not rebel against your husband. Do not cheat your wife. Do not rebel against your husband or wife who has talked to you. If you are doing like this, what is it?
If you are rebelling, then it is equal to witchcraft.
The word of God says, "There's no enchanting against you." You need not fear. But today, the Lord is giving a promise. There's no enchantment against you.
You need not fear to go and pray to witch pastor.
You are the servant of God. You have the anointing in you. You have the grace. You have the power of God in you. You have the tongues. Let's all close our eyes. There's no enchantment against Jacob. Finally, he brought him with full heat. Should I have brought him here? And I asked him because he's... And I asked him to hate his lovingness. But never I say nothing to him, he's doing contrary to it. Finally, I asked him to go sit to Suzanne and... Finally, he said? And he told the word like this. A star shall come out of Jacob. And the sister out of Israel. And I will see him. Finally, he came to the hope of his coming. Those who are having the hope of his coming, those who are going to come upon his coming, no witchcraft will come near them. If anybody does witchcraft, you, one thing they should be saved.
You should not give them the blessing of God.
The powers which are rising against you, the Lord should destroy, or they will become your friends. Let's all close our eyes. You keep your name in the place of Jacob and Israel. Let's all close our eyes. For five minutes, of all these four verses should be your own. These four experiences should be coming into you through grace by the... There's no enchantment against Jacob, no divination against Israel. No witchcraft, man, enchantment, divination, or any other thing is against the channel of God. All the evil past the Lord has cut us. Let's all close our eyes. How many of you want to overcome devil? How many of you want to overcome witchcraft?
You should be able to speak good language.
Anybody, your sister, brother, or neighbor, or your brethren does anything against you, if the Lord is with you, the Lord will cut those powers. You need not worry as to who has done this thing, or how much money they have given, you not be worried about it. Your God is great, he is in you, is great, and he is doing great things in you. The Lord will subdue the enemy. The Lord will give me the foolishness all the... Our Lord is the one who made the wisdom of the witchcraft and the foolishness. All the spirits which have been given towards you have gone to return. You should come to a right determination today. How many of you believe this? You should come to a right determination today. Might be any witchcraft? You should not fear. Everyone will see you, your coal, your serpent, everyone will see you. Do not care anything, for the rod in your hand will swallow all other serpents. Moses let down his rock. It became a serpent. And the magicians put down their rock. Those all became serpents. But the Lord saw. The serpent of Moses washed up all the other serpents. Although a great crowd is coming against you, the Lord will scatter them. Don't worry as to how many years witchcraft is. You should be able to speak good language. You believe in, I believe, twelve, ten, there's an end for your witchcraft. Maybe? Maybe? You might have heard, yes, that he will get up with two years. Do you know what the Bible says of a devil? It's the saying that it has a time. But Jesus crossed that way. Have you come to chase us before tonight? Yes. Before the time, the Lord is going to chase the wicked spirits. The Lord is going to torment those spirits and chase them. He is going to judge those spirits and chase them. An end for all the witchcraft today.
Ah. Anything that bothers you, whether it's about your children, your wife, your business, your mind, or something that bothers you, I'll tell you. Whether it's about me or you, but I have a feeling that something bothers me, and I understand it. Because I see it in many ways. Even though I have tried hard, some things are unsuccessful. Sometimes I think that I have a problem, and I tell you. One, a man, a woman, a girl. The other, some women are scared of you. Whether you feel it or not, now you are shaking your hands. We all, you are all witches, we should pray. Whoever in this village, if you are scared, in the holy name of Jesus, I will kill you. Wherever you are, in the name of Jesus, I will kill you. In the name of Jesus, I will kill you. In the name of Jesus, I will kill you. Ah. I have something to say. I have taken it. You should not look at it. You should be in the name of Jesus. You should watch your children, your family, your children, wherever you are, in the name of Jesus, I will kill you. Stand up for your children. Fight, witches. Fight! Fight! Stand up in the name of Jesus! Hallelujah! Ah. Something is... I have forgotten. I have forgotten. I have forgotten. I have forgotten. You can't do anything. Why can't you? Because Jesus is here. In the name of Jesus, I will kill you. In the name of Jesus, I will kill you. In the name of Jesus, I will kill you. Hallelujah! Hallelujah! Ah. A girl. She was watching her sister. She was having a marriage. She was having a marriage. The pastor shouted. She was sleeping. The family had a 20 kilometer distance. She was having a baby. She was telling her mom. She was having a baby. She asked her mom. She told her mom, "The rain came from the window of our house. A bird flew over the window." She took it and saw it. She saw it. She was sleeping. She was shaking her head. It came. Now, she is shaking her head. You should be scared of it. Your family, business, office, church, wherever you are, in the name of Jesus, go! Go, Jesus! In the name of Jesus, I will kill you. Hallelujah! Amen! Ah. Today, I have something to say. You should practice it. Your life is short, and you will not be able to live. You should learn your blessings. You should join the faith. You should protect your own good person. You should not be scared of it. Hallelujah! If you are a saint, you will be blessed. You will be blessed. You will be happy. Hallelujah! Ah. I have something to say. The reason why this rain came? Why the rain came? The reason why it came? I have something to say. Whoever knows this verse, they will be scared. Everyone should shake their hands. Whoever in this village, who knows this verse, will be shocked. Hallelujah! I will kill you. I will kill you. I will kill you. I will kill you. Hallelujah! Hallelujah! You will kill you. Hallelujah! Amen! Hallelujah! Ah.